Please remain standing for a second and let's have a moment of silence for our troops defending us overseas. And keep them in your prayers. Thank you. Mason. Okay, this evening's meeting is called to order Monday, January 4th. Mr. Robert Morris. Present?
Present.
Mr. Frank Hagan.
Present.
Mr. Daniel Crashauer.
Present.
Mayor Markounis, present. Virginia Menschner.
Present.
Maura Hertzman.
Present.
And Ms. Kathy Van Sickle.
Present.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a few, we have a guest speaker here tonight representing the Police Benevolent Association of New York City. Chief Osborne, would you like to come on up?
Sure, sure. Mayor, would you like me to go through my agenda first very quickly?
Sure, if you don't mind.
Okay, you got it. Just have a couple of things on the agenda under the Police Department. One is, I know we spoke about it at the workshop, it's an MOU agreement of understanding between the County of Rockland and the village. And that is that they're going to reimburse us $1,428.32. And that was for PRD training, which is for the radioactive, personal radioactive detectors that were given to us by the county through the Secure the Cities program of the NYPD. So they're going to reimburse us for the training that we went through those.
That sounds good. That sounds great.
Do we have a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with the County of Rockland for the PACI and portable radiological device as described by Chief Osborne?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Chief?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Second will be for a public hearing next month for a stop sign on Ramapo Avenue at the intersection of West Malpe Avenue. For many, I'd say many months, if not years, people have been complaining about coming out of West Malpe. And also secondary benefit of a stop sign, people are going to slow down. They sort of have to slow down with a stop sign. Hopefully, they're going to slow down. So, we're going to propose for a public hearing for a stop sign. The mayor and I took a look at that location and agreed that'd be the best spot for it. For a public hearing for next month for Ramapo and West Malpe for the stop sign. Just ask for a public hearing for next month.
That'll be the public hearing be scheduled for February 1st at 7:40.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Just give you some yearly statistics. Some of the numbers are still coming in. We probably have more vehicle traffic summonses because in our system, when we download them from the track system, which is an automated system for accident reports and summonses. At this time, we had, in our, from calendar year 2015, we had issued 1,807 vehicle and traffic summonses. We had 7,012 police blotters and we had 311 arrests as from these, from January 1, 15th through December 31, 15. The summons numbers will probably go up. Usually takes five to six days to get them all in the system. So if anybody orders summons late December, probably show up within the next few days in our system. Just wanted to give you some information on that. Community work, I want to thank Kathy and Charles and Mayor Markounis who came out and helped us out. We had our tour drive and we helped out a lot of families. And Frank, I saw Frank was over there as well, came over. And Frank gave us coats that we were able to provide to the families as well. A lot of these families needed coats as well. So Frank, if I correct, Vincent Linguanti, wasn't he Italian-American club? Provided the coats to Frank and we were able to give them out to somebody's family. So I just want to thank you for that on the community end as well as Charles and Kathy Mills, which is here somewhere in the back. Thank you for your help. And I just follow the councilman with this Ramapo also was there that they helped us out as well. Thank you, Pat. Our village of Suffolk for the second year in a row, we're very fortunate. I want to thank you for your support. We recognized as the safest area in the region. We ranked number 10 out of over 600 municipalities in New York. We've been in there for 2014 and 2015. So I just want to thank you for your support of our department. We're very fortunate to be ranked that high. And just one other thing I just want to mention, one of our officers, I thought did a great job. We had a burglary arrest. I know I told, I think many of the board members about it. One of our officers on patrol on Memorial Drive observed suspicious activity taking place behind Suffolk Pool. He pulled in to check it out. It was 1 o'clock in the afternoon and it just saw that a house had been burgled by, which we didn't even know yet, on Memorial Drive. They pushed a safe down the stairs, pushed it through the parking lot behind the pool. Were trying to open it and the officer just saw some activity that didn't look right. He pulled back by the river and we got in a foot pursuit with three individuals. And all three were captured. Two of them jumped in the water and man, it was cold, it was like 40 degrees. The water happened to be cold, man, it was freezing. And they're down in the water pretty quickly, but one jumped back in as we chased them down the thruway. He jumped back in the water, but three arrests came out of it. So just wanted to say Officer John Kiernan and the other officers that day did a great job. And that's all I have. Thank you. And we have representatives from the 52nd Precinct, which is in the Bronx, NYPD. If they would like to come up with a presentation. Thank you, Caesar. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you for allowing us a few moments of your time this evening. I'm Caesar Munoz, a resident here in the Village of Suffolk, as well as a New York City police officer, along with PBA Representative Ferraz Oedoo of the New York City Police Department of the 52nd Precinct. On behalf of Inspector Nilda Hoffman, she wasn't able to attend this evening due to an ongoing investigation. On December 28th of 2014, New York City Police Department suffered a tragic loss of two officers. Police Officer Wenjen Liu and Police Officer Rafael Ramos now laid to rest as Detective Liu and Detective Ramos. They lost their lives serving New York City that day due to the heinous act committed by Ismael Abdullah Brinsley. This tragic event was felt across the nation and police officers as far as France and England came to pay respects to our fallen comrades. The response was tremendous. Many donations from multiple organizations were made to show support of the families who suffered this loss. Officer morale was low among the rank and file of the Police Department and it showed. My mother-in-law and previous mayor of the Village of Suffolk, Tricia Bado, saw me coming home upset and disturbed about the events that took place and in general, the daily dealings of New York City. She then got in touch with Chief Clark Osborne, who came up with an idea to create a design and sell T-shirts that would raise money for the families of the fallen. The shirt designed was such a nice tribute to Officers Liu and Officer Ramos. The shirts actually were so popular that I believe I heard at one point it reached as far as Hawaii and police officers and families in Hawaii were purchasing shirts. The Suffolk PBA, along with Chief Osborne and of course, you guys, the village residents, were able to raise nearly $25,000 in about three to four weeks. It was truly impressive and amazing. The outpouring support from this village that it showed New York City was tremendous. No more than two weeks after that day went by, I came home from work one day and former Mayor Bado handed me a shopping bag full of gift cards to Dunkin' Donuts, 7-Eleven, Panera Bread, Starbucks, and many other places of business to be distributed to police officers throughout New York City. In these cards were messages of appreciation and hope delivered to New York City police officers from you guys, the Suffolk residents. When given to the officers, the look of confusion and joy both filled their faces. And after explaining how it came about, the wow, that's amazing, came out. There is a saying in Tibetan, tragedy should be utilized as a source of strength. No matter what sort of difficulties, how painful the experience is, if we lose our hope, that's our real disaster. And that was said by the Dalai Lama. And I am grateful and honored to be here tonight as not only as a Suffolk resident, but to present to Chief Osborne, former Mayor Tricia Bado, and the residents of Suffolk, New York, this plaque of appreciation. That reads, "In recognition of the Suffolk Police Department and Village of Suffolk, thank you for your ongoing support in 52nd Precinct and the New York City Police Department. Your kindness and generosity will always be appreciated and never forgotten." And Chief, this is a...
Thank you, Caesar. I got you very much. Sure. I just want to thank Caesar. Caesar started his department as a dispatcher with us. And he's right, we actually had national recognition due to our fundraising. And shirts are all over the nation. So I want to thank all of you for your support. I know many of you up here bought shirts. I remember seeing all of you come through last year with the lines we had at the door. We actually had to reorder the shirts probably five times. We sold thousands and thousands of shirts to raise that money. And it started just as an idea and I want to thank you for coming up tonight. And all of you in the village, all of the residents and people around the country that bought these shirts. My friend is a lieutenant in Kissimmee, Florida, which is where Disney is, from Suffolk. And he and the Kissimmee and Orlando Police Department bought up so many shirts. We had to ship boxes up and down there to Florida as well. So if you're ever in Disney and you see a shirt, it's in our cell. So thank you very much again to all of you. Mayor Markounis, thank you for the opportunity to have them up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, I too, on behalf of the board, would like to commend you, former Mayor Tricia Bado, Officer Munoz, and our PBA delegate from the 52 PO, Edo. Thank you very much. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for letting us go first. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next on in the line of order, we're going to have some public participation. And any suggestions from the public will be welcome now. Please come up to the mic and state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to wish everybody a very safe, healthy, and happy new year. My name is Jeff Ganser, 32 First Street. Hello?
There you go.
There you go.
32 First Street, Suffolk, New York. I would like to just talk about a couple of things tonight. The first thing I would, I'm curious to know is what happened to the speed tables that were going to be installed on Ramapo Avenue? Which I think in the long run would be a better option because there would not need to be police observation of someone passing a stop sign. Unless you're planning to put cameras that catch people passing a stop sign. I live at the corner of First and Ramapo. I almost got run over on the sidewalk. This is a validated, a police officer happened to drive by a minute later. He saw the curb all cracked, the skid marks on the sidewalk, and the track marks just missing the fire hydrant at the corner of First and Ramapo. So I believe that, and this is a conservative estimate, 40% of the cars on Ramapo Avenue are going 35 and above. I almost bought a radar gun, but they're a thousand bucks. So I couldn't spring for it. I want to take radar picture with the cars coming. My wife yells at me when I do it because I go like this, you know, slow down. There's got to be an app for that. Sorry? There's got to be an app for that. There is, but it didn't work. I tried it. There are many apps actually, but none of them work. So that's very important to me and for the safety, I think of everybody who lives in the West Ward, especially the kids on Ramapo Avenue. My kids are grown, but I care about everybody. The next thing I wanted to ask you about is recently, there's been a rumor floating around that the building, that the house that was attached as one parcel to the former Metro Vac facility had 30 men living in it. Hasidic men, okay? It's false. It's a false rumor in case anybody heard it. It's not true. It's a lot of baloney. But I was just curious, has that building been sold? And do you know what kind of a business is going to be there? And should I just keep going and then you'll...
Sure.
My last comment is, we have a new board. We know that the Orange Avenue project was approved. My question to the new board and the new village attorney is, is there any way possible to undo the pilot? Any possible way to start a procedure to erase, obliterate the pilot and make the developer pay the same taxes that residents pay and any other person? That the person who invested $2 million at the hardware store, he pays his full taxes? I'm just wondering if there's a way we could start a procedure to undo the pilot? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Ronald Klipstein. I reside at 20 Somerset Drive, Suffolk, in the Bon Air Park Condomunity. I send an email to the mayor and two trustees within the past 24 hours just to brief you on the situation and make it so you don't have to take such extensive notes while I'm talking. I've been a resident of the village or an unincorporated Ramapo with a Suffolk address from almost my entire life. I graduated proudly Suffolk High School way back when. And I've come here as the representative of my condo community in Bon Air Park. I'm the president of the Board of Managers of Bon Air Condominiums III. I'm representing 48 property owners, myself included. Our problem began over four years ago and has been only getting worse. The garbage and dumpster-bound items on the screened-in deck of one of the homes in our community is a public nuisance, an eyesore, a fire hazard, and a safety issue, and reduces the property values of all residents. As you can see on the couple of examples of the photographs that I passed out, it's not a particularly good-looking situation. The current resident does not own, he is a squatter who the bank owner has attempted and failed to evict. He has been sent letters about the mess on his deck that has existed there for over four years, but he pays no attention. The owner next door, the previous owner next door could not sell her home for over a year because of the eyesore. She had, you could imagine the problems she had getting prospective buyers up there to look at her home, which was right next door. They have to walk past that mess. Rodents are seen regularly going in and out of tears in the screened-in deck. Rodents threaten the safety of all residents in the building as well as they do damage to the property itself. Neighbor owners complain of the stench in the summer. And neighbors fear that is a fire hazard and the squatter leaves bags at the top of the stairs, which impairs exiting in the event of a fire. The homeowners association is charging the owner of the unit a fine of $25 a month, but the owner cannot control the behavior of the squatter. The condo, our condo rules prohibit waste in common elements, including the deck, but our attorney warns us that state law considers removal of the items by the board to be trespassing. Our board has spoken to the village building code enforcer and the Police Department and we've been told that there is nothing that can be done because apparently it is not hazardous waste. And I'm coming before you tonight to suggest that the, that suggest you consider strengthening the village law regarding public nuisance and to ask for any suggestions that you might have for our problem. And as well, I would like to see about getting the building inspector or fire department to inspect the interior of the home because of the concern that it is a fire hazard. Thank you.
I received your email today. I read it. I directly responded to the building department with a few suggestions that I've made in regard to reviewing the property maintenance laws and also reviewing or notifying the Department of Health. So it was immediately addressed. I should have some more feedback tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I saw these pictures earlier today as well. I don't want to stand in the shoes of the attorney for the condominium, but I share office space with an attorney who represents like 30 or 40 condominiums. And I know that he has had issues like this. And they've been addressed, you know, in a private property matter or manner. That this would probably violate about 20 different provisions of the bylaws of the condominium. And regardless of, you know, the efforts of the village, there also should be more of an effort, in my opinion, being made by your condo attorney to address this, having looked at these pictures and the potential impact on the insurance for, when you have a condominium, it's, the entire condominium has a master insurance policy? And the individual unit owner has a condominium policy? But this could affect the master insurance policy? If something were to go awry here and you don't want to be in a situation where the board didn't act, meaning the condo board, to be very aggressive and then have the insurance company come back at you if, God forbid, something did happen. But the village will do what it can, but in my opinion, a lot more could be done than at least heard from you has been done from a private property perspective. But we will do.
Thank you for moving forward with this in any way you can. And I hope that this is just not the beginning. It's just the way it is. I do intend and the board intends to move forward with this in whatever manner we can.
Very good.
Hi, good evening. Happy New Year to everybody.
Can we just speak into a little...
Roy, 16 Laura. This may not have any... I'm a member of the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 333, which is located here in Rockland County. We have enacted a program over the last two and a half years where we do a lot of fundraising and we purchase special hand cycles for men and women who are in the Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, wars, and have had their legs amputated and/or spinal cord injuries. We purchase these for these veterans. It's good for rehabilitation and recreation. A lot of these veterans, men and women, have entered different kind of Paralympic races and it's not only good for their well-being, but for their psyche. Helps them segue back into more or less a normal, unquote, normal lifestyle. But HIPAA laws prevent us from contacting a veteran outright. So what we do is we go through different veterans hospitals or other outreach programs. And it is a little bit difficult to make contact with these veterans. So what I'm asking tonight, if anybody here would happen to know of a veteran, male or female, who is in need of a hand cycle, these hand cycles run from $4,000 to $7,000. We as veterans will purchase it for them and we will deliver to them. We will train them how to do it. And it's just a way for us to give back to our fellow veterans. We are committed to doing something of these nature, of that nature. So if anybody would happen to know of somebody in that realm, I would ask that you please contact the mayor's office, who will then contact us, me. And, you know, we can, you know, we can do this in their privacy if that's what they prefer. And this way, we can help enable their life a little bit better. And that's all I have to say on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Roy. It's people like you that make it easier on the veterans that are returning home that are disabled. Keep up the good work, Roy.
Hello, my name is Gianni Esposito and I reside at 40 West Malpe. I am a Suffolk High School... I reside at 40 West Malpe. I am a Suffolk High School senior at the moment. And I was born and raised in the Village of Suffolk. I would like to congratulate our new mayor and the board members. And I would like to ask as someone growing up in the Village of Suffolk, that you will create a vision for our village which would be able to make it somewhere young adults would want to live and be able to afford to live after attending college. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Markounis, could I just give you something that I've written down about the...
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Thank you for listening to me. Joe Maraglino, 65 Wayne Avenue. Here to discuss, first of all, I'd like to thank the new mayor and congratulate him for coming out to my house personally to see how bad the situation is on Wayne Avenue. As far as sidewalks go, as far as quality of life goes, and as far as safety goes for the residents that live there. They're just having to try to cross the street safely. Ever since there was a tragedy back in May, when one of my neighbors got struck and eventually died of an apparent accident from a car, we are pursuing things to get a little bit better. This man came out. We walked the entire street from Pavilion Road down to Orange Avenue and back up and to discuss everything that, every issue that we have brought up in the past to see if we can better the quality of life. I just, the piece of paper I just gave the mayor had to do with the Department of Transportation. A lot of the things that we are trying to get done go through the Department of Transportation. I saw a couple of new signs go up as far as speed limit restrictions, as far as 30 mile per hour speed limits. And I know that they're trying to even drop the speed limit even lower on Wayne Avenue. We also requested that underneath the thruway overpass coming westbound from Pavilion Road, that the, there's two lanes underneath that bridge. We're trying to get it one lane. That Department of Transportation supervisor I ran into just a week ago understands the situation. Hopefully, in the future, after they're done with all the, I know they're digging up Wayne Avenue for gas main repair and be doing that for months. But after they repave the road, hopefully, they can implement crosswalks. In the future, if we get a federal grant, hopefully, we can get brand-new sidewalks, especially on the north side of the village, the north side of Wayne Avenue. Because some of the sidewalks are just deplorable. I know we need money for that. And I know you got to ask the government for this type of situation. Also on Wayne Avenue, I forgot to mention to the mayor. At 65 and at 67 Wayne Avenue, we were discussing about tree removal because these trees are obstructing power lines. Mine personally, and you witnessed it, I forgot to mention it, and I wasn't here last month, that the tree limbs are, the trees just simply grew around, you know, the utility lines. On my house, at my next-door neighbor's house, the 67 Wayne Avenue, the tree is completely dead and it's already leaning on the power lines. So we just want to know if the DPW could remove it. We understand that, again, I know the street was up and dug up. I know that one of the workers there was saying to me, we'll got to try to wait until they're finished and we're trying to help you out. Recently, I think these men that are doing the gas line are temporarily on vacation or they're taking a break. I haven't seen in the past week.
Thank you.
Hi. Paul Gerard, Two Cross Street. Just wanted to inquire, I think, Mr. Mayor, you know that there was a hearing on December 9th regarding the cleanup of the old gas plant down by the ball fields, and there were a number of questions that we had the night when that was all presented, and I was just curious if you had received any updates, because that project, I think, was supposed to start this month, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, the project, I received updates today, actually. The project's probably going to be delayed a few weeks until they answer, fully develop, fully answer the questions that we had concerns of, and develop the plans that we spoke about, contingency plans in case the wells get contaminated, what reaction, every measures they're going to take. So as of now, they don't have the complete list of answers, and they are continuing to work on it.
Okay. So if I understand you correctly, are we delaying things until we get satisfactory responses?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Terrific.
It doesn't move forward until we have, until they have village board approval.
Okay. And how does anybody interested in the outcome of that find out? Do I just periodically call to see if you've got any update, or?
You could call the office. I'm just thinking, I don't know if there'd be a public hearing. Not sure if there'd be a public hearing before work begins.
Right, right.
Because there were a lot of outstanding questions, but we will definitely inform the public.
Okay. Yeah, because obviously that water quality issue is a huge one for us, so.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim Genatino, Two Memorial Drive. I have a simple request. I request the board, excuse me, adjourn this meeting in honor of Joe Savarice, a former mayor who passed away this week.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to that? In honor of --
Yeah. So, motion. Just a formal.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Alfred D'Ambrosio, Four Cross Street, Suffolk, New York. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good. It's good to see you, Mayor, and associates. I just wanted to put a little notation of a sort. Through past administrations, plural, I had noted that I would request, had requested, and noted even with the Department of Public Works, that the signs on my street were pretty clear, easy to read, except for those who don't know how to read, where it said, "No parking," et cetera, "from here to there," or "not at all." But I notice every morning, I look out four o'clock in the morning and I see cars parked in front of my home or perhaps close to my neighbor, or in such case. They do that, a lot of people who maybe know people in the condominium across the way, but they just seem to feel so able to do what they want to do, and maybe they might leave a souvenir like a beer can or bottle. And of course, I'm really saying I don't like that because I don't know if they're good people or bad people, but the signs really say they shouldn't do that. So I'm just saying, it should be, if possible, maybe when they drive around, our officials, that they'll tell them to move on. I mean, I park in my driveway, and if I'm going to have people come over to stay, I call the police department and say, "Joy, these people have permission that they can park in front of my house." And they usually say, "Yes, Alfred," if, or "Mr. D'Ambrosio," and "We have no problem." So I just wanted to pass that up to you, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure the police department will be on routine patrol checking Cross Street for violators.
Good evening. Carrie Adwar, 16 Stockbridge Avenue. I don't see it on the agenda, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if and when you're making an appointment for your vacated seat?
We will be making an appointment. We are going through the process now, yes.
Do you know when that will be?
In the near future.
Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome. Okay. If there are no, no, oh, sorry, Carol.
Carol Veron, Boulevard, Suffolk, New York. I am a lifelong resident. Just wanted to remind you, I brought up the sidewalk situation on the south side of the Boulevard from the bridge to Rockland Terrace. There's a lot of kids use that. They walk up to the little store, people walk up there, and they walk, there's, on the other side, but there's nobody there. They should have to walk across the street to the sidewalk and then walk back again. We've got people that walk to catch the buses and the trains down there. I just want to make sure that you will address that. Item number two. I have, on a few occasions, seen accidents out here in front of the church by the crosswalk where the vehicles have not stopped before the crosswalk. I saw a few weeks, a couple of months ago, a car hit another car. Would it be, would you be able to have the words painted, "Ahead, stop"? If you've been in many other neighborhoods and areas, you see the words, "Ahead first, then stop," and then you get to a white stop line, and just before the stop line, you see the big letters, "Stop." Now, I can understand not wanting to have signs posted right in front of the church or right on the corner where people are, they would be obstructed, you know, "Stop here on red" or that. But just painting it on the, before the crosswalk, just as an extra reminder for the people as they come along, "Stop before the crosswalk. Don't go flying over it. Try to beat the car that's stopped there at the stop line and get around them so you can be the first up to the traffic light." The crosswalk is there for people to walk across. You may not see that person, especially when we have a school there, we have the movies and people are walking back and forth all the time. It's a busy intersection out here. And just something to think about.
Okay. Well, I'll address that with the chief of police.
And item number three, on the truck safety on Rampoe, when they start this cleanup. Trap Rock has been running for many years. They have the crusher over on Snake Hill Road and Crusher Road in Nannewett. I don't know how many people are familiar with that, but it's right by the Palisades Mall. And the last few months, they have had a number of trucks flip over, jackknife accidents, I mean, that are totally avoidable if they're doing the speed limit. We have the same problem on the bend up here on the throughway, where they take the bend a little bit faster than a truck will handle, and the suspension system may be a little off, or the load may not be exactly squarely loaded. Make sure that this gets addressed when they go into it. You know, heaven forbid, one flips going down here. I'm Rockland County's first female firefighter, among other things, hazmat, heavy equipment, emergency response, and we need to know, are we going to have the proper fire manic stuff here within immediate response thing that we don't have to send it all the way, maybe from Pomona, and wait if it's something serious hazardous flips over, especially if we're going to worry about contamination and stuff?
Okay. We will take that into consideration, Carol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Public hearing, there.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
It's Jeff again. You brought this up when you mentioned, could the Cross Street cleanup situation over there? If I'm not mistaken, there was a building that was taken down that, for many years, contained all of the noise coming from our shooting range back there. When Orange and Rockland took that building down, I can hear the shooting right on Lafayette Avenue, right in front of Dunkin' Donuts, Colonial Florist. I was standing out there the other day. Bam 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 bam. I lived in the West Ward twenty-four years. Up until about a year and a half ago, I never, ever heard a gunshot. When they took the building down, it's become a problem for me and many other dog owners in the area. And this is not anything, you know, against the need for practicing and being proficient in the use of a firearm. We all know that's very important for our department. Could we perhaps get Orange and Rockland to build a wall before they leave so that they could block the sound, or get them to do something to mitigate the noise? The throughway I can live with. I mean, I'm living with the trains on one side, I mean, Route 17 on the other. There's no silence in Suffolk, we know that. There's no sound of silence. That's not possible around here. That's, we accept that. But there's a, you know, the need for shooting, I totally relate and understand it, but is there any chance, maybe you could consider thinking of a way to mitigate the sound traveling too far beyond the boundaries of the property? I think it's something to consider at any rate. Thank you very much. By the way, I did talk to the chief about the speed tables numerous times, and I am under the impression that they were approved, but then the money was not forthcoming. And I'm hoping maybe we could find the money somewhere, cancel the stop signs, because I'm a firm believer in speed tables. I think they're much more effective. It doesn't require observation from an officer. We can't, you can't be everywhere at every moment, but a speed table is there all the time. And once a guy hits that at 45, and his head hits the roof of his vehicle, he's going to remember that, and he's not going to go fast again. But people, I believe it, I don't know if I'm being a soothsayer, they're going to blow that stop sign every day. I live there, I see it, they're crazy drivers, daily. I know you can't do anything.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. If there is no other comment? No. We are running a little behind on a public hearing. I'd like to call up Mr. Fred Rella to speak. Motion to, open the public hearing. Excuse me.
Motion to close.
Open.
Oh, public hearing, I'm sorry.
Good evening, board, and happy new year.
All in favor?
Aye. Go ahead, Fred, time.
For the record, it's eight twenty?
Eight twenty. This is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Initiative, which we're going to be putting in an application in at the end of January. This is an annual program. It's HUD money, so it's federal money. This year, they have raised the amount that one can apply for from $100,000 up to $200,000. So that is a very nice increase of 100 percent. Very exciting to say, particularly after the public participation, that the Citizens' Advisory Committee is recommending to the board that we put sidewalks, new sidewalks and curbs as needed on the north side of Wayne Avenue. And this would be from Orange Avenue going up towards, going east towards the throughway overpass. From the throughway overpass coming, going west, there are some sidewalks, but then there's a whole section from Cross Street to the end of that sidewalk where there are no sidewalks whatsoever. And you actually have an apartment complex where people, there's a stairway coming down from the apartment complex onto dirt, and then they're right there onto the Wayne Avenue. So this is a much-needed initiative. Some of the sidewalks are in good shape. Many of them are heaved, some are crumbled, and some are nonexistent altogether. So that is the recommendation. We're going to be applying for the full $200,000. The village would be contributing an additional 10 percent. So the total project cost would be $220,000.
Okay. Thank you, Fred.
Fred, you have to, resolution number one.
We're going to take a motion.
Resolution number one.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Wait, we have to have a resolution. You have the resolution?
No. Virginia, we have to close the public hearing.
Let us first close the public hearing.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Well, first off, does anyone have any comments on this?
Yeah.
Okay. None being? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close the, motion to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Fred, with your resolution?
With the application that has to be submitted no later than January 29th to the Rockland County Office of Community Development, we have a resolution that needs to be passed, and that is before you tonight. I'm hoping for a unanimous vote, which would show the full commitment of the village towards this project. I will read the resolution to you, and then you can vote on it. Resolve that the village board accept the recommendation of the Community Development Advisory Committee to seek Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funding for the Wayne Avenue sidewalk project that authorizes the submission of the 2016 CDBG application. The CDB application will state that the 2016 Wayne Avenue sidewalk project cost will be $220,000. Of this total, $200,000 will be contributed from the Community Development Block Grant, and 10 percent or $20,000 will be contributed from the Village of Suffolk. If a lesser amount of CBDG funds are awarded to the Village of Suffolk, the village contribution shall remain constant at no more than 10 percent of any such CDBG award. For example, $150,000 award will equate to a $15,000 Village of Suffolk contribution. Additionally, the 10 percent Village of Suffolk contribution can be the cost of a project coordinator for the development, implementation, and oversight of the Wayne Avenue sidewalk project.
Is there a motion to that effect?
A motion to approve the resolution.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we have a further resolution, just in case it's needed, to authorize the mayor to sign the application on behalf of the village?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. Do you want me to go over the few other grant items?
Sure.
At this point in time? Tree City USA. Two years ago, we applied for Tree City USA status within the village. It's a program that you have to reapply for each and every year. So once you get, once you get the designation, that's only good for 365 days, and you have to apply again. So we recently applied for that. We'll know within the next 30 days whether or not we have been re-designated as a Tree City USA. Additionally, after being a Tree City for two years, which we just hit that milestone date, you can apply for what's called a growth award. And a growth award means that you've gone over and above what is required to be a Tree City. And it gives you another designation such that when you apply for grants with the federal government or the state government, it gives you a few extra points to be awarded, and that would be for like the maintenance of trees, trimming, or the actual purchase of trees. So that's something which is very good. JCAP, Justice Court Assistance Program. We applied for several items. I did this with Christine Anderson within the Judiciary Department. We applied for a magnetometer, also some new electrical outlets for a magnetometer, as well as varying office equipment ranging from filing cabinets to bookcases to even just a date stamp. And I'm proud to say that we rewarded all of our items. So it's approximately a little less than $10,000, but that's something which is very nice. We just found that out a couple of days ago. Finally, I'm working with the fire department on some FEMA firefighting equipment, which is necessary. That grant application is due on January 15th. I'm working with Chief Koffer on that, and we're looking for things like infrared camera. We're looking for what they call a V-strut set. That's like if a car is leaning, you can put these metal bars up, and it will hold the car up to prevent it from falling back down on the rescue workers or upon someone who would be a victim. Sidewalk Project that authorizes the submission of the 2016 CDBG application. The CDB application will state that the 2016 Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project cost will be $220,000. Of this total, $200,000 will be contributed from the Community Development Block Grant, and 10 percent or $20,000 will be contributed from the village of suffering. If a lesser amount of CDBG funds are awarded to the village of suffering, the village contribution shall remain constant at no more than 10 percent of any such CDBG award. For example, $150,000 award will equate to a $15,000 village of suffering contribution. Additionally, the 10 percent village of suffering contribution can be the cost of a project coordinator for the development, implementation, and oversight of the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve the resolution.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we have a further resolution, just in case it's needed, to authorize the mayor to sign the application on behalf of the village?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. Do you want me to go over the few other grant items?
Sure.
At this point in time? Tree City USA, two years ago, we applied for Tree City USA status within the village. It's a program that you have to reapply for each and every year. So once you get, once you get the designation, that's only good for 365 days, and you have to apply again. So we recently applied for that. We'll know within the next 30 days whether or not we have been re-designated as a Tree City USA. Additionally, after being a tree city for two years, which we just hit that milestone date, you can apply for what's called a growth award. And a growth award means that you've gone over and above what is required to be a tree city. And it gives you another designation such that when you apply for grants with the federal government or the state government, it gives you a few extra points to be awarded. And that would be for like the maintenance of trees, trimming, or the actual purchase of trees. So that's something which is very good. JCAP, Justice Court Assistance Program. We applied for several items. I did this with Christine Anderson within the judicial department. We applied for a magnetometer, also some new electrical outlets for a magnetometer, as well as varying office equipment ranging from filing cabinets to bookcases to even just a date stamp. And I'm proud to say that we rewarded all of our items. So it's approximately a little less than $10,000, but that's something which is very nice. We just found that out a couple of days ago. Finally, I'm working with the fire department on some FEMA firefighting equipment, which is necessary. That grant application is due on January 15th. I'm working with Chief Koffer on that, and we're looking for things like infrared camera. We're looking for what they call a V-strut set. That's like if a car is leaning, you can put these metal bars up, and it will hold the car up to prevent it from falling back down on the rescue workers or upon someone who would be a victim. Not a victim, I guess, within a dire situation. Also, a couple jaws of life, and we're looking for new gas detectors for each of the six fire trucks that we do have. And that total amount is around $40,000 to $50,000 of equipment. So we're hoping to hear positive things from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. I'm going to make a motion to authorize, ask for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the application for Tree City USA. No prong tongue?
None pro tongue.
None pro tongue.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Mr. Zawicki, Department of Public Works, please.
Good evening, Mayor and the board. Last month, I was able to update the board that we completed a New York State DEC consent order project, the Bio Retention Basin. This month, I can report that we have successfully completed the Phase Two Task One on the implementation schedule for a consent order, and we, the board members, received a cover letter on indicating that. And that was done as a result of the teamwork of the various departments of DPW, so did that with in-kind services. And we do have, as part of that consent order, we do have four other tasks that we'll need to complete, and that was indicated on that implementation schedule. And so that would be Task Phase One, Task Eight, and Phase Two, Task Two and Three are still need to be completed. So that's the updating, my go. Any questions?
Great. That Bio Retention Basin came out very nice. I believe they did a great job. It looks well, and in the spring, it will really enhance the parking lot look.
Yeah, well, it, yeah, I think.
And provide the drainage and the.
And once things start to pop and bloom a little bit, I think we're going to take on a new look, absolutely.
What they did was they created a Bio Retention Basin which allows excess drainage and water to be collected into a 20 by 20 area.
About 20 by 30.
20 by 30 area with numerous types of trees and plants in there, and I think they did a great job. Thank you.
I am requesting the mayor to appoint Mr. Gabriel Vasquez to the vacant laborer's position within the refuse department. Mr. Vasquez has been approved by Rockland County personnel, is a sufferin' resident, has a CDL-B license with a air brake endorsement. Pay rate for this position is $16.68 per hour with a starting date of January 11th, 2016.
Can I make a motion to appoint Mr. Vasquez to the position of laborer at a rate of $16.68 an hour?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Effective January?
January 11, 2016.
On 11, 16, do I have a motion?
Confirmation.
Confirmation.
Motion.
Motion to confirm the appointment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, during the, during the workshop, I had issued to the board members the PO-27 for a position at the Wasteway Tree and Plant. That was the position of Assistant Plant Operator Two. And what I'm asking the board to do would be to create this position, not to fill the position at this time, but to create the position so that we could, moving forward, that we could fill that position.
At the, well, as we spoke this afternoon, at the, as we discussed this afternoon, at the present time, we're going to take no action on that for a variety of reasons, a couple of pending lawsuits and some other issues that you and I discuss. So we won't take any action in creating that position.
All right, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to get a vote from the board? Is that what you're saying?
No.
All right, that's it for me, thank you.
Mayor, we have our regular board meeting of November the 9th to be voted on.
Let's see, accept the minutes of the board meeting?
Yes.
Motion.
Vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on. Only the trustees who were members should be voting on November 9th.
Just tell them the mayor.
So. So there will, there can be, I mean, little civics lesson. If you read the minutes and you familiarize yourself with the minutes, technically, you could still vote on it. But as an aside, minutes really never have to be voted on because they're the clerks' minutes. So in this instance, my recommendation would be that you just let it stand that they're the clerks' minutes and not vote on it.
Okay, at the attorney's recommendation, we will accept the minutes as the clerks' minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a request for the prenatal walk, which is every year, October the 3rd this year, at 2016.
Do I have a motion to have the bereavement, the annual bereavement walk on October 3rd, 2016?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Where? What time?
It'll be October the 2nd.
It says the 3rd.
What was that?
No, October 3rd, the 2nd.
October the 2nd. If that's the 3rd, there's a typo there, I'm sorry. It was corrected, but it wasn't corrected on these minutes.
Okay.
Where?
They usually start at the post office or down at the parking lot B, and then they proceed up Lafayette Avenue to the hospital.
From when to when?
What time do they start?
Hold on a minute. They usually start at 1:30.
Okay.
They will walk down the sidewalk near the hospital and circle the hospital grounds, returning to our starting spot in front of the hospital.
Okay, and my advice would be to coordinate with the sufferin' police department.
They usually do.
Just making it clear.
Okay.
Okay, make a motion again. Take a look at it.
Okay, so does anyone want to make a motion to amend the previous motion?
Motion.
Based on the conditions and the changes that were just described?
Motion, motion to amend the previous motion.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, we could mention, we can mention that.
What do you mean, mention that?
They wanted to have the new members appointed.
Okay, okay. We're going to step back here and go back up onto the agenda, and speaking of the fire department, they were unable to attend this meeting. So they are introducing new members for January 2016. One, Matthew Galley from the hose company, Charles Ford for the hook and ladder, Manuel James Gutierrez in the hook and ladder. Two come with previous experience, two are firefighter, one trained, one is not. They're seeking to be members. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, provided this is all, this is all that went past the fire department already, so.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we need to set the dates for the February meeting. The workshop will be scheduled for Friday. Note Friday, January 29th, 2016, 7:00 p.m., and the board meeting will be held Monday, February 1st, 2016, at 7:30.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, finance department, Mr. Janito, please. Oh.
Culture.
Sorry. Come on.
Culture and Recreation.
The public hearing threw the schedule, the agenda off, so I do apologize.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board.
Good evening.
A few things that we have coming up for recreation. This Friday, January 8th, we have the lead program over at the community center on Friday at 8 to 11:00 p.m. Those welcome to stop over and say hello. AARP will be starting on Saturdays in January, in two weeks from now, at the Leo Leiden Building from 10 to 2, and then on Tuesdays from 10 to 2, and then February and March and early April at the Leo Leiden. It's free to all seniors in the village of suffering. There will be an Eagle Scout Ceremony on Saturday, January 30th, over at the community center. And then a few things that I told you at the workshop, we have senior activities that are available to village residents. Just for everybody's knowledge, we have Stay Fit on Mondays between 11 and 1 and 4 and 6, and Thursdays between 9 and 11 and 4 to 6. We have Artie Time, which is an art program for seniors. We have it on the first and Thursday, first and third Thursday of the month at 11:30. Registration is required. It's a great new program, which we started this past year, so it's welcome to everybody in the village. We have the Chair Exercise Program, which is on Tuesdays or Wednesdays, according to the calendar, at 9:30 at the center. We have Chair Yoga for all seniors on every Friday morning at 10:00 a.m. at the community center. We have Suffering Senior Meetings on the first and third Wednesday of the month, and Ramapo Senior Meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday. If anyone's interested in becoming a member of the, either of the clubs, they can give recreation a call, and we'll be able to give them information. And then we have a nutrition workshop tomorrow morning, starting at 10:30 a.m. upstairs in the community room. The other item that I have on my agenda is the discussion for the proposed events for 2016, so I was wondering if you had any feedback on that, if we are okay to go ahead with our dates.
Does any, anyone have any comment on the, the events, the upcoming events? No, as we went over in the, in the workshop, it all looks good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we go to the finance department. Mr. Mike Janito, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that we want to bring to your attention, on December 7th, at the village board reorganization meeting, they adopted the IRS rate in effect then for mileage reimbursement at 57 and a half cents a mile, and I know that you have a resolution under your area mayor to amend that, because on December 17th, the IRS changed the rates for 2016 to be 54 cents per mile for business miles driven. And that, of course, is only for authorized use of a personal vehicle on village business.
Yes.
The other two things, one is that we did receive some money from FEMA, about $18,000, some amount that was left over from Hurricane Sandy. That actually came in November into December. And the other thing is that we sent out to the departments budget requests, starting to kick off the budget process, and so we'll start reaching out to others, such as the assessor and, and other people for input on that. And we've asked departments to look at the budgets very carefully and to, of course, keep them as concise as they can, cut the expenditures where they can, and to try to find whichever ways revenues could be enhanced, new areas and that sort of thing, to try to keep the tax burden down as low as possible.
Thank you, and I'll be stressing that to every department head here in the village, that, and reminding them that we need to run a tight budget, a tighter budget than last year due to our situation that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our village attorney, Mr. Dan Crash Allen.
There's got to be a better way to do this. Good evening, everyone. When I last appeared before you, I was village attorney for 15 minutes. Now I'm a veteran of exactly a month. I know that the mayor and the village board said that they wanted to look forward and not back. Unfortunately, what I've discovered is that we're going to have to look back on certain things. In particular, our ethics law was adopted when Jimmy Carter was president. A lot has changed. A lot needs to be added to the ethics law in order to instill greater confidence in government and the people who work in government. And I've been charged by the mayor and the board of trustees with revising that. That's one of the actions that the board will take tonight in terms of setting a public hearing. Another, thank you. Another thing that coincidentally was brought up by one of the students from Sufferin' High School relates to another thing that I discovered, that the last time the village adopted a comprehensive plan, Reagan was president. You're really supposed to do it every 10 years and look at it again every five years. And what the comprehensive plan does is it sets the blueprint for the future development of the village, and it involves a lot of community participation. I know the mayor stressed that at Reorg. And the way we envision that happening is to actually have lots of meetings with neighbors, neighborhoods, people that, you know, have a vested interest in the future development of the village, including the housing that the student from Sufferin' High School brought up. Been working very hard, you know, I have noticed a number of things that we can implement, which I think will not only reduce the tax burden, as was mentioned by the mayor going forward, but we're also looking to create an environment so that business can thrive here, so that we can improve the quality of life and make Sufferin' an even better place to live. And in my limited time of being here, I have to tell you, it's an amazing community, and I'm a pessimist, and I actually am very optimistic about the future of this village, and particularly with the board that I'm serving under. And I'm a pessimist, and I actually am very optimistic about the future of this Village. And particularly with the Board that I'm serving under and the people that I work with that I've started to really get to know. And I think you should be proud of them as well. And if you're not yet, I promise you, you will be. Thank you.[1113.63][1113.63](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to set a date for a public hearing to repeal and replace the Village's ethics laws. I would suggest that we do it on February 1st.
At 8:00 P.M. That's Suffolk Village Hall.
We have one at 7:40. You want one at, this one at 8:00 P.M.?
Do this one at 8:00 P.M.? Yeah. At Suffolk Village.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll-
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'd also like to set a public hearing to approve two 15-minute parking spaces. The exact location hasn't been fixed yet, but it's going to be generally in front of or there and abouts of 74 Lafayette Avenue. I suggest that we set it for February 1st at 8:15. At Suffolk Village Hall.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll-
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'd also like to set a public hearing to approve two 15-minute parking spaces. The exact location hasn't been fixed yet, but it's going to be generally in front of or there and abouts of 74 Lafayette Avenue. I suggest that we set it for February 1st at 8:15. At Suffolk Village Hall.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
We would like to add two advisors to the Tree Committee.
Do you want to make the appointment?
Sure. Okay. As Trustee Hagan recommended, adding two advisors to the Suffolk Tree Committee, I would like to appoint Ms. Sheila Foster and Ms. Sandy Stead.
Do we have a motion to approve the Mayor's-
How about the term?
Motion to approve.
How about the term? To run with the trustees-
To coincide.
Okay.
To the reorganizational meeting in 2016.
To coincide with the term of the established term that was established at the Reorg meeting. Sounds good.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1305.63][1305.63](APPLAUSE). Sheila and Sandy are in the audience with us today, and thank you. Thank you very much volunteering. And, you know, let's keep our trees growing.
They will.
Thank you.
I have a couple of local laws I want you to review and consider recommending to the Board.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to present a resolution modifying the parking department policy.
I make a motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Resolution number three, 2016, authorize the Mayor to send a letter of request and resolution to New York State Department of Transportation requesting a review of reduction in speed limit on Route 202 on Wayne Avenue within the confines of the Village.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Have resolution number four dash two 16 to adopt the Village Military Leave Policy. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a motion to enter into an executive session at this time.
Motion to discuss.
To discuss personnel.
You have one more, a resolution that mileage reimbursement.
You didn't get the new one.
I need to get the new one.
I put one on your desk.
Which one?
Here, Mayor.
Okay.
The mileage one.
Okay, so is that number five?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I have resolution number five dash 2016. Authorized the reimbursement for mileage.
Amending.
Amending. Let's see.
If I can-
Go ahead.
As Mr. Janito alluded to, after the reorganization meeting on December 17th, the IRS came down with a ruling called IR 215 dash 137, which actually lowered the reimbursement rate from the previous year of 57.5 cents per mile to 54 cents per mile driven with regard to Village business. So this motion amends that previously adopted resolution.
Motion.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to enter into an executive session for personnel.
We'll return the both.
Are you going to return? Or are you, you are?
After-
After the motion. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just so everyone's clear, a Board that enters into executive session cannot vote while they're in executive session. They would have to come back out into the regular meeting in order to vote. It is likely that after the executive session, there will be a vote. So I just want you to be aware that if you're interested in staying, there will be a vote on what they're discussing, the personnel issue, the personnel issue that they're discussing in executive session.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Crashhour.
Okay. In executive session, the Board discussed-
Get right into the line. I'll explain.
A personnel issue, and we do, we do not want to name the individual, but a motion would be in order to serve a Village employee with notice of statement of charges for misconduct. And that would be done by hand delivery. Do we have that motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries.
And then secondarily, a motion to have the Mayor send a memo to that employee notifying them that they are being suspended without pay for 30 days pending resolution of the previously referenced disciplinary charges against that individual.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Be in order.
Second.
Joseph Sabarisi.
Yeah, oh, yes. He, we didn't adjourn yet.
Good evening, Board. Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, Trustees.
Happy New Year.
Just two things. In regards to the adoption of the Military Leave Policy, as a veteran, I thank you. I think that's very important for the active reserve, regular reserve and active reserve and their families. One thing, if we can get a copy of that policy, because for the CSEA, it's a bargaining agreement point, so it just needs, I'm not sure if it's based on state law or if it's changed. It's something that needs to be negotiated and we can discuss.
Sure, we will provide you a copy along with the PBA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, with whatever occurred and the employee that's going to be charged, if that employee is part of the collective bargaining agreement before he is charged or when he is charged, I need to be there. Thank you.
He would like to be, if you want to make yourself clear, he would like to be present when the employee is served.
As long as the employee is-
A CSEA member in the bargaining unit.
Otherwise, I have nothing to do-
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can close the meeting.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of a former Mayor, Mr. Joe Savarisi. It is always an honor to close a meeting in regards to someone that served this Village. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting, to adjourn the meeting in Mr. Joe Savarisi's name.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.